Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the recommended motion as stated, please say aye. Any objections, please say nay. Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now let's turn our attention to the tariffed neighborhood RFP submission review.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, in front of you, you have, and in the drop box, you had a one-page memorandum summarizing proposals received and staff's review process where we reviewed the submitted seven responses to the solicitation based on project team qualifications, overall strategy and approach, experience with similar projects, and degree of innovation. That was two planners and one representative from the engineering department. And our finding was an after-grading, which is now included in the sheet on page two. You can kind of check our work and see our work. That our recommendation is to bring in the top three scoring firms, Colliers Engineering, FHI Studio, and SLR International, and bring them in for a presentation and questions at your April 23 meeting. And I would suggest we keep it a little, as tight as we can, and I would have, I would suggest kind of a time-certain schedule that allows, you know, a block of time to have them present briefly and then ask questions about their proposal or their approach, or however you want to proceed with that.
He said at the last meeting, the cost proposed was roughly the same for all of them.
Very similar. And, in fact, if you would allow me at that meeting, one of my questions will be what areas, what areas of the proposed scope can be, can be refined to reduce cost. I hope that you guys would ask that question as well.
Yeah, I looked through all the proposals. I didn't score them as rigorously as town staff did, but I'm in agreement with the three entities identified.
They're very competitive. When you do these, they're always going to be very competitive. And, you know, and we try to follow what the solicitation asks for. Is there, are they, is somebody, is one firm really thinking about it maybe a little more deeply or differently than, than another? And try to, you know, there's no perfect answer when it comes to these things. And I think we did our best in at least scoring them.
Are any of them local, George? Local firms? Is that a consideration?
So it's not a consideration necessarily, but the three we recommend all have offices in Connecticut.
And they, all three of those had...
Representative projects...
Right.
...in Connecticut.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe we can, you know, establish like a 30-minute block.
Yeah, yeah.
Make that clear to...
So when, yeah, I'll do the invite and just kind of map out this is, this is what the plan is.
Now...
15-minute presentation, 15-minute questions, or however.
Right, and then maybe a 15-minute break. I don't know. Do these, you know, consultants, are they going to sit and watch each other's presentations?
Yeah, because it's going to give them advantage to the ones that are followed, that they know the answers already.
Yeah, that's a challenge with a public body, because we can't do it in executive session. The meeting is public. The meeting is public. You'd have to, we could flip a coin. They're going to have done their presentations by the time they get there, and I guess, I would count on you guys to weed through that. But I'll think about a better approach, but I don't, because it's a public body, I mean, it'd be different if you said, "Staff, go pick them." We're not doing that.
Right.
This is your, this is a big project, and it's important to this commission, so it's really incumbent upon you to ask the questions and have, but we, but it's, everything that we do has to be at a public meeting, so it's, there'll just be some advantages and disadvantages. We'll draw straws.
I think we'd be better off if we have them all present and do questions at the end, maybe, so that they can't work off the questions. I don't know, I mean, maybe that's making it too complicated.
I mean, professionally, my, my experience would suggest that they're not good, they're really not hanging around to hear what, at least they, it's probably a professional faux pas if they do, but they might. They can't... I would, you know, the one thing, one thing that you could do is just keep in mind the questions you ask and try to ask similar questions of them. I mean, you know, sometimes that keeps it a little, a little bit more fair. We can work through that. Let me, let me think about that a little bit.
I think they're going to have their presentations pretty well baked before they get here.
They will. That's what I'm saying. I think it'll be all baked in, you know?
The first ones that come in, they'll give their pitch, you know, and they'll ask our questions. In the meantime, the second and maybe third group is out in the hall listening.
Yeah.
But how much will that affect the way they respond? I don't think it's going to change their presentation...
Right.
...that much, but yeah, okay.
We're going to have them submitted ahead of time to be up on the screen anyway, right? So it's not like they could change it mid-meeting.
Yeah, I'm certain we'll have, we'll have the presentation in hand before the meeting even starts. Yeah, so maybe there's a mild advantage to answer in a particularly difficult question, maybe.
Okay, then if the commissioners are in agreement, I'd like to give town staff the marching orders to arrange to have these three, I guess I should make this a motion.
I would make it a motion, yes, sir.
So I'm going to move that we ask town staff to coordinate presentations with the three identified firms, that being Colliers, FHI Studio, and SLR, to present roughly 15 to 20 minutes presentation, followed by question and answers of the commissioners for our April 23, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Okay. Angel seconded that. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion to give town staff the authority, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Very good. All right, I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I really don't have any preconceived notions as to what they're going to present to us. I'm actually very excited.
They're three very quality firms.
Yep. so you can kind of check our work and see our work, that our recommendation is to bring in the top three scoring firms, Colliers Engineering, FHI Studio, and SLR International, and bring them in for a presentation and questions at your April 23 meeting. And I would suggest we keep it a little, as, as tight as we can, and I would have, I would suggest kind of a time certain schedule that allows, you know, a block of time to, to have them present briefly and then ask questions about their proposal or their approach or however you want to proceed with that.
He was said at the last meeting, the cost proposed was roughly the same for all of them.
Very similar. And, and in fact, if, if you would allow me at that meeting, I, one of my questions will be what areas, what, what areas of, of, of the proposed scope can be, can be refined to reduce cost? I hope that you guys would ask that question as well.
Yeah, I looked through all the proposals. I didn't score them as rigorously as Town Staff did, but I'm in, in agreement with the, the three entities identified.
They're, they're very competitive when, when you do these, they're always going to be very competitive and, and, you know, and, and we try to follow what the solicitation asked for. Is there, are they, is somebody, is, is one firm really thinking about it maybe a little more deeply or differently than, than another? And try to, you know, there's no perfect answer when it comes to these things. And I think we did our best in, in at least scoring them.
Are any of them local, George? Local firms? Is that a consideration?
So it's not a consideration necessarily, but the, the three we recommend all have offices in Connecticut.
And they, all three of those had.
Representative projects.
Right.
In Connecticut.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe we can, you know, establish like a 30-minute block.
Yeah.
Make that clear to.
So when, yeah, I'll do the invite and, and, and just kind of map out, this is, this is what the plan is.
Now.
15-minute presentation, 15-minute questions or however.
Right, and then maybe a 15-minute break. I, I don't know, do these, you know, consultants, are they going to sit and watch each other's presentations?
Yeah, because it's going to give them advantage to the ones that are followed, that they know the answers already.
Yeah, that's a challenge with a public body, because we, we can't do it in executive session. The meeting is public. The meeting is public. You'd have to, we could flip a coin. They're going to have done their presentations by the time they're, they get there. And I, I guess, we, I would count on you guys to weed through that. But I, I'll think about a better approach, but I don't, because it's a public body. I mean, it'd be different if you said, staff, go pick them. We're not doing that. This is, this is your, this is a big project and it's important to this, this commission. So it's really incumbent upon you to, to ask the questions and have the, but we, but it's, everything that we do has to be at a public meeting, so. It's, there'll just be some advantages and disadvantages. We'll draw straws.
I think we'd be better off if we have them all present and do questions at the end maybe, so that they can't work off the questions. I don't know, I mean, maybe that's making it too complicated.
I mean, professionally, my, my experience would suggest that they're not good, they're really not hanging around to hear what, they, at least they, it's probably a professional faux pas if they do, but they might. They can't. I would, you know, the one thing, one thing that you could do is just keep in mind the questions you ask and try to ask similar questions of them. I mean, you know, sometimes that keeps it a little, a little bit more fair. We can work through that. I, I, let me, let me think about that a little bit.
I think they're going to have their presentations pretty well baked before they get here.
They will. Every, that's what I'm saying. I think it'll be all baked in, you know? I mean, they'll know.
The first ones that come in, they'll give their pitch, you know, and we'll ask our questions. In the meantime, the second and maybe third group is out in the hall listening.
Yeah.
But how much will that affect the way they respond? I don't think it's going to change their presentation.
Right.
That much. But yeah, okay.
We're going to have them submitted ahead of time to be up on the screen anyway, right? So it's not like they could change it mid-meeting.
Yeah, I'm certain we'll have, that we'll have the presentation in hand before the meeting even starts. Yeah, so maybe there's a mild advantage to answering a particularly difficult question, maybe.
Okay, then if the commission, commissioners are in agreement, I'd like to give Town Staff the, the marching orders to arrange to have these three, I guess I should make this a motion.
I would make it a motion, yes, sir.
So I'm going to move that we ask Town Staff to coordinate presentations with the three identified firms, that being Colliers, FHI Studio, and SLR, to present roughly 15 to 20 minutes of presentation, followed by question and answers of the commissioners for our April 23, 2024 meeting. Second. Angel seconded that. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion to give Town Staff the authority, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Very good. All right, I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah.
You know, I, I really don't have any preconceived notions as to what they're going to present to us. I'm actually very excited.
They're three very quality firms.
Yep. Super, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, P O C D Implementation Committee Draft Invite Letter.
So, you know, normally Erin and I would have done this and I would have had her sign it and not even show it to you typically, but we were like, she, she didn't have time to sign it. We, I didn't really get it finished, so we're like, well, I'll just show it to everybody. You know, I'm certainly, you know, letter writing by committee is not always the best approach, but I did want to show it to you. And if you had suggestions that made it better, all the better for, for us and, and the product that we put out.
No, I, I read it. I'm fine with it.
I think it's well done.
And I don't think you need to take any action on it. Just show it to you. I'll get Erin to sign it and we'll, and we'll go.
Now, go ahead, Holly.
No, I just think it worked. I'm glad that.
I believe Holly's stepped up to be the, one of the Planning Commission representatives. There's going to be two and.
Wait, did I?
No, I, so I, I understood that, that, that Erin's suggestion is that the, the chair and the vice chair would, would, would be the two members and that Holly would play the backup role if either you or Erin weren't available.
Okay, perfect.
On, by volunteering.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know about that.
So that's voluntold.
I'm, I'm hearing this for the first time. I did, I did say I would liaison with the sustainability.
Yep, yeah, we still, you still need to do that.
We built in, you know, the backup when we adjusted the two, two Planning Commissioners, right? So then now we're going to have a backup to the back.
Yeah, just, just, just in case, why not?
Okay.
Only suggestion for an edit is a due date by, like when you want to hear it by, unless it's there and I've just been missing it. Like just, it just says, you know, let me know who will represent. You might want to time it.
Yeah, fair enough. Yeah, it's, sometimes it's.
Right.
It's difficult to give the board of selectmen a.
Right.
Never know unless you try.
So that was the thinking. Due date, got it.
Again, input.
No, sure, that's, that sounds great.
We're going to show how we're going to run this, you know, this little subcommittee.
Yeah, there we go. I like that.
Great, thanks, George. Thanks, Commissioners. Okay, I don't see anything else.
I got one other item for you. Just, just for, just for, for happy thoughts here. So Brittany and I went down to the award ceremony.
Awesome.
For the, our award-winning plan. And we did get a plaque that we will, I wanted to show you. I didn't feel like bringing it out. It's just a, it's an old-fashioned, you know, eight and a half by 11 plaque that was presented to, to, to you. I accepted on your behalf.
Excellent.
And they said some very nice things about, about the plan and, you know, how the combination of including the livability principles and coming out of COVID and look, relooking at the plan and focusing on housing and sustainability and inclusion was something that, that, that the group hoped that other towns would, would, would do and follow our lead. So it's kind of nice, nice to hear.
Is there a picture of you in your tuxedo accepting?
So there is. There is a picture, but it's, it was a luncheon at Testa's in Southington, so no, I wasn't wearing it. All right, so, and then of course our friend Glenn was there, it's me, Brittany, and Glenn.
Awesome.
So there you go. Didn't realize how tall Glenn is when you're standing next to him, and Brittany, for that matter.
Well, and I think they're also close to the camera.
So, anyway.
Yeah, it's awesome.
So there you go.
Yeah, so last week, Commissioners, I also am Simmsbury's representative to the CROG Regional Planning Commission, and they're undertaking a rewrite of the, of the Capital Region Council of Governments Regional Planning Commission CO, P O C D. And if you remember, part of the process of our CO, P O C D being ratified was submitted to the RPC. And they were very happy with the content. So to the point where they said, you know, they're going to look at ours when they're redoing the regional planning, P O C D.
Makes sense.
Yeah, they had very nice things to, to say that the CROG did.
Also, I, I saw an article in the paper, it was all about affordable housing, it might have been yesterday's paper, talking about municipalities' responsibility to create an affordable housing plan. And there's still 30% of the towns in Connecticut who haven't submitted their affordable housing plans. We were, I think if we're not, no, we weren't number one, but we were in the top.
Early, for sure.
That's what we did during COVID. That's what we worked hard on.
So the commission's been, I think, very proactive, complying with the requirements, and we should strive to keep that up.
Hey, George, question for you. On the Plan Implementation Committee, are those going to be public meetings?
All public, yes. They're all, every meeting we have in this town has to be public. Yep. Yeah, I, I think they're going to end up being kind of quarterly or as needed and, you know, really a reporting function and, you know, with, with good peer-to-peer contact. What are you guys working on? You know, I thought you said you were going to work on that.
Right.
I mean, you'll have to figure out what the tact is associated with it. But I think once, once we get folks who want to be involved, you can start asking those questions. You know, as, you know, it, it, part of my comments to, to the Connecticut Chapter of American Planning Association was, well, we got this plan, now what do we do with it, right? Implementation is important, and the zoning commission has already taken steps to start the inclusionary zoning draft text amendment review process. So that's good. And they're, they're going to, they're going to have their work session in, in two weeks where they're going to invite some developers and some advocates and talk about how do you get to a reasonable number and, and what makes sense in a community like ours, just in terms of, you know, requiring an affordable component as part of residential development. So once they get that draft, you guys will see it, but they're, they're, I suggested they do some work sessions now before they draft really any language. That's good. So the implementation is really important. And you, as I said, your job on implementation is largely going to be doing some of these neighborhood plans, going to start with Tariffill. So there are other things we can be doing, of course, but that's going to take, take some of your time over the next six to eight months.
Anything, you know, in the wings, George?
It's been, it's kind of, it's been fairly quiet. We've got a, a site plan for daycare center. You saw the, you guys saw the subdivision application for that.
That's at Aspen Green or.
In front of Aspen Green, so that's, that went to design review and will go to, it'll go to the Zoning Commission in two weeks for review. The Silverman application did file an appeal, I think I, I think I told you that. But otherwise, no, it's a, I don't have any, there's nothing, there's nothing kind of big hanging out there right now.
Do we have a timetable on that Silverman matter or no?
You know, we've got to respond by April 9, and then it gets into, you know, sometimes those land use ones take a little bit, a little bit of tile, so that's, that's certainly a year out, if, if we go to trial.
For sure.
For sure, right.
Right, right.
But, but who knows? Who knows? That'll, that'll have a lot of twists and turns, that process.
Has Vessel taken any steps to start their project?
They have not, they have not. We, we had contact with them about two weeks ago, asking about preliminary submission to the building officials. This is, this is some construction we haven't, have a lot of experience in, you know, they are proposed kind of modular pieces, so we asked them to, you know, submit their stuff as soon as you can to, to the building department. So, so we understand they're putting some of that together. Maybe 30 days, I would, I think they would have a whole package in looking for building permits. I don't, I don't, I'm not really sure if there are other moving parts that they're, you know, I don't know about their financing or their, you know, materials or procurement.
Well, you got a lot of balls in the air, so.
They also have a lot of balls in there. But, but, you know, they've got.
Yeah.
They've got a couple of other lawsuits going and they have some projects that are underway, so.
Any other comments, Commissioners? Okay, without objection, I will, what do we say? Adjourn the meeting without objection at 7:37. Thank you all.
Thank you.